Good morning and welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Today is December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. All members of the court are present and the meeting is called to order. If anyone will please rise for the invocation by Pastor Scott Briggs with Oak Grove Assembly of God Church. Good morning Pastor.
Good morning. I want to say thank you very much for this opportunity. And, uh, you know, I was thinking this morning, and I'm gonna be really real quick, but I was thinking this morning about the world we live in. Terrorism, the darkness, the fear, the problems, the difficulties. I'm sure that all of you would like to do more, but you just have limited funds. And I was thinking this morning, it's the same world that Jesus was born into. The uncertainty of the Roman Empire religion had dominated the scene. Everything was dark in his world too, but he came and shined a light. And I just want to encourage you this morning during this Christmas season, don't look at what we don't have, but let's let Christ shine a light through what we do have. Heavenly Father, we thank you almighty God for the opportunity to come into your presence today, Father God. I thank you Lord God that I still live in a nation, Lord God, but we can freely pray and freely practice our religion and our love of you. And God, this morning I pray in Jesus' name, Lord God, that you give these men and women wisdom, Lord God, as we deal, Lord God, with the situations of this county, Father. I pray that your Holy Spirit would rest upon this court, oh God, and that these men and women, Lord God, that they would have your wisdom, your guidance, your knowledge. Father God, I pray, Lord God, that we would always be thankful for what we do have, Lord God, instead of complaining about what we don't have, Father. Thank you, Lord God, that your wisdom is always perfect, that your timing is always right, and that all things are done unto the glory of Jesus Christ. And I pray that you be with this court today, lead them, guide them, direct their discussions, and may your name be glorified in our midst. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Jared Fountain, would you please lead in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, Glenda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. Ms. Austin?
That would be a regular meeting on November the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen.
All right.
I will.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release the fee of the liability of four hundred thousand, three hundred nine dollars and twenty-six cents, and to cancel the vouchers related to this money. This was the total of the county's bills that were presented at the last Commissioners' Court meeting held on November twenty-third, two thousand fifteen.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
The cash report summary, general checking account, seven hundred ten thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and fifty cents. The investment account at Wells Fargo, two million, eighty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and five cents. Text pool, general account, one thousand, seven, one million, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, sixty dollars and twenty-two cents, for a total of four million, five hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Move approved cash statement.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you ma'am. And that was Joyce Lane standing in for Ms. McWilliams. Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for November the twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen were fifty-five thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. The pre-approved expenditures for December the first, two thousand fifteen, were seventeen thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. The pre-approved expenditures for December the eighth, two thousand fifteen, were seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents. And today, December the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, the expenditures for Commissioners' Court are two hundred seven thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and four cents. The total expenditures and transfers are two hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. Gross payroll for November the twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred thirty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and nine cents. FICA was thirty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. Retirement was fifty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and thirteen cents. The total transfers for November the twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen payroll was five hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred four dollars and thirty-three cents. The gross payroll for December the tenth, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars and forty cents. FICA was thirty thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Retirement was fifty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents. The total transfers for December the tenth, two thousand fifteen payroll was five hundred six thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and sixteen cents.
Move.
Take the county bills.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is special recognition of personnel by their department head for meeting years of service milestones as follows. First, we have Angela Mayo with the WIC Department for twenty-five years of service. Now, not everybody could make it, but we're gonna recognize them anyway, and I don't see Ms. Mayo. So, maybe her boss wouldn't let her off, I'm not sure, but wouldn't let her come to court. Uh, next, we have Jim Algeri with Roden Bridge Number Three for twenty years of service. Mr. Pelt said he was one of them that's too busy.
He has decided not to come being the good employee as he said he had too much work to do.
All right, the next person that has met the years of service milestone is Jay Frank with juvenile probation for twenty years of service.
Yeah, but he's working with a family upstairs right now, couldn't come back.
All right. If he'd like to come later on in court, we'd be glad to recognize him. Next, we have Jared Fountain with juvenile probation for fifteen years of service. Mr. Fountain, would you like to stand up? We'll have Debbie present you with your certificate.
My office isn't here to present it to me, so I'm gonna say a few things about myself.
Okay. We expected you would.
Jared is ten after PM, that's my guess.
No, I, I just want to say thanks, uh, for the recognition. Fifteen years ago, I was hired on, at that time Esther worked in my office, and she told me that, uh, sat me down, talked to me, said, "Well, you're gonna work at a great place where it feels like family." Says you are gonna gain weight though, because we always like to go out and eat lunch. And fifteen years ago, I was smaller with more hair, but I'm on a diet, I bought road games, so for my twentieth, I'm gonna look different.
Jared, if you'd stand up there, we want to get a group picture with everybody that's got fifteen years of service. Uh, next, we have Dean Eckert with adult probation for fifteen years of service. Good morning Dean.
Good morning. Just real quick, I wanted to thank Dean for his devotion to our department for fifteen years, but also for the, for those of y'all that don't know, he was also in the military. And so I wanted to thank him for his service to our department.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Teresa Watts with the Sheriff's Office in jail for fifteen years of service. Ms. Watts?
Uh, I too just want to thank Teresa for fifteen years of service. She's a shift supervisor in our jail, started out as a chairman, moved up to shift supervisor, doesn't have any job for us, and I appreciate all that you do.
Next, we have Billy Malone with the Sheriff's Office for fifteen years of service.
Billy is working on a case that we got going right now, so he's unable to make it.
All right, thank you Sheriff. Did y'all want to take, this is all the fifteen year certificate holders, do y'all want to take some pictures right quick?
We got one more, Judge.
He's, uh, ten years. Thank y'all again very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lacona Robie with the Sheriff's Office for ten years of service.
Lacona has started out as part-time, and she is now full-time in the office, handles all the commissary, uh, it's our, uh, open record request, and she gets to mess with a lot of sex offenders, because she, she also deals with them, which is a very tough job. I thank her for all that she does, especially in that sex offender category, because that is a real tough job to keep up with, and make sure that these, these folks are where they're supposed to be and safe and sound to our public. And I thank Lacona for ten years of service as well.
All right, last but not least, we have Laura McKennis with the Tax Office for ten years of service, and I don't believe Laura's here, but we want to recognize her anyway. Again, thank y'all very much. Item number nine is Toyden Ackridge with the Health Department, introduction of new epidemiology nurse, Keisha Wyatt. Did I say that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, you did. This is Keisha Wyatt. She comes to us from Tyler County. She's worked approximately seventeen years altogether with corrections and infectious disease, so we're glad to have her experience and welcome her to the county.
Welcome to Harden County. Item number ten is Carl Marshall with Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, presentation of a draft version of the two thousand sixteen Harden County Atlas. Good morning Carl.
Good morning. Yeah, I just want to present the, uh, the draft copy of the two thousand sixteen Harden County Atlas, and, uh, just take a look through it. Whatever changes, try to get back with in the next couple of days. Uh, we're gonna try to print the, the standard book, hopefully by the end of the month, to try to make either the last court date in December or the first one in January.
So if we could get back with you, say by this time next week?
Um.
Or sooner?
I would like by Thursday.
Thursday of this week?
Yeah.
I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah, because there wouldn't be a whole lot of changes that were sent in.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item number eleven, Debbie Mendes Sable, Human Resources Director, direct discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to the travel policy as presented in Commissioners' Court on November twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Morning Debbie.
Good morning. The only change that was proposed for the, um, travel policy was an addition of a line stating if receiving a vehicle allowance, there'll be no mileage reimbursement for travel. So that was the only one.
Have you had any, uh, has anybody discussed that with you?
No, sir.
I've had a couple of discuss that with me. Uh, have any of the Commissioners had any discussion from any of the employees? Uh, I would like to make a recommendation to, to make a change to that.
Okay.
And, and for any, uh, anybody who receives a vehicle allowance, if they are attending mandatory training that's over a hundred miles from the courthouse, that they, they would be eligible for a vehicle, uh, or mileage reimbursement.
Okay.
That's just my recommendation, and I'd like to hear what the rest of the court has to say, or any, any opinion on that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
It's mandated, again, if it's mandatory training and it's over a hundred miles from the courthouse, they would be eligible for a reimbursement.
Yes, sir. Is that round trip? Hundred miles round trip, or just a hundred miles?
One way.
Y'all were on the, uh, committee? Along with?
Michelle.
Monica.
Michelle Bridger.
Has either one of y'all had any kickback or feedback on it?
I had one for keeping it like it was and one for going with the committee recommendation. But I, I don't have any problem with you, Al.
I didn't, I didn't have any feedback.
Okay. With that in mind, I would move that we, uh, accept the committee recommendation with the amendment to put in a hundred miles from, for mandatory training.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve, Debbie Mendes Sable, discussion and possible action regarding changes to the personnel policy as presented in Commissioners' Court on November twenty-third, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, these are the changes that were proposed in November twenty-third meeting on section three. It stated that all employees shall be evaluated once a year at a minimum. It would be changed to may be evaluated. And also in that same paragraph, the evaluation shall be written on forms prescribed by the Human, prescribed by the Human Resources Department. The evaluation may be written on forms prescribed by the Human Resources Department. Section nine, it stated that on-call status may require an employee to carry a beeper or leave a number where he or she can be reached. That's proposed to be changed to on-call status may require an employee to leave a number where he or she can be reached. And, section seventeen, which is the policy on retirement. It was proposed to be added a paragraph stating Harden County will be responsible for seventy-five percent of the monthly health rate for those employees who retire with thirty or more years of active service. And that was the conclusion of the changes.
Okay, I move that the court accepted committee recommendations on changes.
Second.
Is this?
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Is this gonna take effect immediately, or do we wait till next budget?
As it stands right now, it would take effect immediately, because once it's voted on.
I think whenever you sent the email out, you gave us a monetary figure of what employees we have that would currently fall under this.
Yes, sir.
How much it would cost us.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you have that with you, David?
Yes, I do.
I would just like to ask, is, uh, we have some people who are grandfathered, uh, if they came to work before a certain date, and I think that's December of two thousand four, is that right?
Right.
That, uh, their, uh, dependents are also covered?
Yes, sir.
If, if, uh, we make this change as recommended, would that, those people who are grandfathered also be covered, or are we saying employee only? That had been, that had worked here for over thirty years would be eligible for seventy-five percent coverage?
Well, that is what grandfathered is. If they were hired in before December of two thousand four, their, uh, dependents were covered.
Right.
You know, when, after two, that, December two thousand four, they had to pay a hundred percent of what their dependents were covered.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and, and my question.
If we increase this from fifty to seventy-five, for those who worked over thirty years, are we gonna cover the employee only, or everybody that's grandfathered?
That would have to be.
The way it's written, I think it's everybody that's grandfathered.
Everybody that's grandfathered, yes.
I would recommend that it stay the same, with exception of the thirty-year employees, and we put a, uh, an amendment in there that covers the employee only and not the, in other words, the, uh, dependents will stay as it is now, yeah.
Okay, so we continue to pay fifty percent on the dependents, but we increase the employee only coverage to seventy-five?
Correct.
Would, would y'all have an issue?
Well, my only, my only, uh, how, how many would that affect? Just one? Is that only one person that?
We have.
That has employee and family?
We have one person that has employee child, and we have one person that has employee spouse, but that spouse will, uh, it's just gonna be through the end of this year, this budget year, that that spouse will be on there, because he will turn sixty-five.
I don't know, I, I, I don't know how y'all feel about it, I know we're saying seventy-five percent. We never, would, did, you know, we also have on here the hundred percent paying, paying, if we're gonna do that, uh, we could possibly give the employee, if we're gonna exclude the family from it, a hundred percent. Uh, it would, it would, you know, I don't know the difference in that. Uh, I, I just think that the employees who worked here for thirty years, uh, deserve, deserve something. You know, it's just, uh, I mean, there's a lot of difference in working here ten years and getting fifty percent, and working here thirty years and getting fifty percent.
I support the policy a hundred percent, but I'll be voting no because of the budget amendment that will take place today, because of the, uh, departments that were required to take cuts, and the budget year that we had, I think it would be wiser and better received by the public if we handled it in a budget hearing versus in a rewriting of the policy. And so, although I support our retirees one hundred percent, I could see, uh, supporting them one hundred percent of their insurance, I have to vote no because of the budget amendment this will require just a couple of months after we've established the budget, which was October, so I'll be voting no.
Then that would be on the seventy-five percent also?
Yes, yeah, I'm gonna vote no, because I think we should wait and do it this summer when we do budget amendments.
Okay, right now, we have a motion on the table.
Yes, sir.
We have an amendment that does not have a second.
I second.
No, sir, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
We're just in discussion right now.
But I say we have an amendment, that it can receive a second.
Who, what's the amendment?
Didn't you make an amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, amendment was, uh, to have the dependent coverage stay the same as the policy states now, and the new policy stating, uh, the seventy-five percent for thirty years or more only applies to the employee.
Okay.
And that's just a recommendation, it's your motion, so would you want to amend that?
Anybody can amend it. Anybody can amend it. I thought he'd put that in a formal amendment.
I would officially make a motion to add an amendment to yours.
It has to have a second, or else it dies.
All right.
Well, I can't second it, because I'm gonna vote against it.
I'll second that one.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Aye. Motion fails, three to two. So we'll take that up at budget workshop time.
Okay, well, do we go back on the other one now?
Yeah, we got the actual motion now.
Okay. So we go back to the original. Original motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts.
What, what motion was that, Mr. Pelt?
That's to leave it the way that it's written.
Leave it the way it's written.
Okay.
Will you cover seventy-five percent of the employees, seventy-five percent of the dependent, if they're grandfathered?
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Mr. Cooper, did you vote?
No, sir. I'm lost.
The original presentation that was made by?
Mr. Pelt's motion is.
Was accepted committee recommendation. You'll read it again, David.
Yes, sir. Okay, it reads Harden County will be responsible for seventy-five percent of the monthly health rate for those employees who retire with thirty or more years of active service.
For those, those who are grandfathered, that we're paying dependent coverage, we, we would increase that from fifty to seventy-five on the employee and the dependents.
With, uh, what monetary figure?
Let's get that to make sure we have it right.
One moment.
If I, I believe it's eighty-five, ninety-one, sixty-four.
Okay, yes.
That's for the entire year.
That's for the entire year, for the.
Remaining six months or whatever.
For the remaining six, I mean, nine months of the fiscal year, it's six thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. For a full year, it's eight thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
For how many years?
Well.
It's gonna vary.
It's gonna vary. People coming and going, when they hit, reach sixty-five, they get dropped from the medical. We have, like I said, one person who is fifty-five years of age, they have a child who is twenty years of age, and that child can be covered till they're twenty-six.
So it'd be forty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's all of them.
Well, that's all of them, that's everybody.
That's everybody.
This is everybody that's on the retirement that has medical coverage right now.
So at this time, that motion has a, a vote of two for and two against?
I vote for.
Okay, three for and two against, motion passes.
That's the original motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Don't feel bad, we debated that about forty-five minutes.
Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action to accept the City of Salisbury's resolution, number fifteen dash twenty, to provide Judge Chris Ingram, Justice of the Peace Precinct Number One, office space at the Salisbury Police Municipal Court Building in exchange for his service as Associate Municipal Judge, and authorization for Rebecca Walton County Attorney to sign letter of agreement regarding same.
I'm for it, and I would make a motion for it. The only thing that confuses me is why Rebecca's signing rather than the county judge.
I'm not sure about that either, I don't know.
Well, I would, you know. But it doesn't have a second yet, so I can't do anything.
I guess this is an agreement between the city manager and the county, uh.
Attorney?
I mean, the, uh, city manager of Salisbury and the Justice of the Peace, and Rebecca Walton's just approving it as to form.
I talked to, uh, Judge Ingram before he went for this, before he went to, uh, city council, and he currently, uh, has an office space in my building, and I told him I didn't have a problem with it, but with exception of this, originally, uh, before he got in there, when the, uh, previous judge was there, we was paying rent on a building, and we did not have to pay rent for him to come to that building, so if it did not cost the county any money for him to move over, I didn't have a problem with it. I mean, it's not gonna be any additional funds for us.
I, I have no problem with, with what's being proposed. The only problem I have is that whether it's Justice of Peace or any, any office, only the Commissioners' Court can take action. And normally, the ju, the, uh, county attorney will approve that the agreement is legal, but then the county judge signs it.
Yes, sir.
Can we make a motion to approve?
If somebody's seconding that motion, I'll amend that motion.
I think we just need to, uh, change Judge Ingram's name to my name on the agreement, is that correct?
No change of.
Rebecca.
She's just approving it as to form as far as the agreement, just like she would on any contract that she blesses.
Authorization for Rebecca Walton to sign.
We'll just change that to my name.
Just change that to judge. And then that'll fix it up.
Is that your motion, Ken?
Yeah, that's my.
I second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, with the changes being that, uh, the authorization for county judge to sign the letter of agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, Esther Scarborough, Flow Plain Administrator, discussion and possible action regarding approval of preliminary plat of Rock Creek Ridge subdivision, phase three.
We'll be table.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts to table item number fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, Misty Whitney, purchasing agent, authorization for county judge to sign agreement for food services and commissary service, agreement with Lone Star Commissary for the county jail. Misty.
We do, Misty's anything special about it?
I've worked with Captain Burris and, um, I have to review those contracts, so we're just asking for permission to get them signed.
So, my.
She didn't know that, just so y'all know, the, the commis, the commissary one has to be signed by the sheriff by law. He has to sign that, but the food service would have to be signed by the judge.
Okay. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, Misty Whitney, discussion and possible action regarding results of proposals received for project administration and management services for the Department of Agriculture On-Site Sewer Improvement Project. Good morning.
Proposals were opened on November thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at ten AM in the Purchase Department, our office. Erica Cooper and Trudy Unruh were present. Proposals were received from David J. Waxman Incorporated. We also received a late bid that we were unable to accept. Uh, the evaluation committee was Commissioner Kirkendall, Jared Fountain, and Esther Scarborough, and, uh, they reviewed and evaluated the bids and recommend David Waxman.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, Misty Whitney, discussion and possible action regarding statement of qualifications received for engineering sanitation services for the Department of Agriculture On-Site Sewer Improvement Project.
Statements and qualifications were opened on November thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, at ten AM in the Purchase Department, our office. Erica Cooper and Trudy Unruh were present. They were received from the following, Lester A. Saucier Junior, C.P. Coward, and Carolyn Blackman. And it was the same evaluation committee, Commissioner Kirkendall, Jared Fountain, and Esther Scarborough, and they recommended C.P. Coward.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank y'all to the, uh, committee for evaluating those bids as well. Before we adjourn, I just want to make an announcement that, uh, Ms. Austin made contact with the Secretary of State's office. Uh, Mr. Ford had decided to, uh, put the, uh, item of the annexed building on the next ballot, and we had decided to do that in May. Uh, we cannot put it on the May ballot, we can only do that in odd number of years.
Yeah.
So next year, the earliest we can put that item on the ballot is in November, and I want to bring that to the attention of the court. That, that'll be the earliest we can put it on the ballot.
Okay, I had talked to Angela the other day, and I understand by January, we should have some figures on the, uh, carryover, cash carryover.
Okay.
And I think then we discussed that, at that time, we would take a look at whether we wanted to go ahead and evaluate proceeding with, uh, certificates of obligation versus waiting until May on the, uh.
We would just have to put it back on the agenda if anybody wanted to discuss that?
Yeah. Well, it, we won't have it for this. Well, it, we won't have it for this year, but I would like to see us discuss it as early as possible in January.
If you, if you will get with me, when you get those numbers, and once we find that out, I'll put it on the agenda, and then we can discuss what we wanna do.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Stand adjourned.
All right, might have a miracle.
Have a good one.
Yep, so we'll meet, we'll be all right. Sorry for all the confusion there.
There's no confusion.
Well, I was talking to you.